Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Quincy School Committee Policy Subcommittee meeting for September 22nd. We have three hours and four minutes of summer left, so let's enjoy it. We have two items on the agenda this evening. The first is the high school promotion and graduation requirements cited in the book, nine point eleven point five, and we're proposing revising the existing policy. We have before us the new policy that is proposed, so I assume everybody's had a chance to look it over. And are there any questions on any of the edits or changes? Mr. Guttrow, can somebody walk us through the changes?
Sure. So we had an existing, this is an existing policy that hadn't been updated in several years, so I compared the text in here to the text that's in the Program of Studies booklet. And so basically, the majority of the changes are editing the language clarity, the points, you know, the point structure and the number of courses, none of those things have changed. The wording was different than the original policy, so I replaced it with what's currently in the Program of Studies book. And then the community service section at the end had actually never been normalized in the policy book. And so I created that language and made it very specific to address the fact that we've waived community service for the last three school years, and so that each class would have a clear understanding of the requirements. This year's freshmen will go back to their regular cycle. Will go back to the regular cycle of 30 hours.
It doesn't sound like the microphone's working.
It is on.
He's looking at us.
Like on.
Off, it says off. It's on.
They were all on a minute ago, I put them all on.
Okay, so can you, okay, now, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, so for community service, just very specific information for each class that's currently in high school, so that the current seniors have basically been credited with the community service they were not able to perform during COVID-19. This year's juniors would have to do 10 hours, the sophomores will do 10 hours this year and 10 next year, and the current ninth graders would do 10 hours each year, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, as had been our practice. And then the only correction, correction, which would be a correction also for the Program of Studies booklet, which is what the parents and students receive, is that the physical on the first page, I think it is, that the physical education requirement, so it's number two under academic credits, the physical education requirement is actually a state law, so I just changed the language to make that clear.
Any other questions? Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, have we heard from the coordinators of community service if they think that the world has opened up enough for us to be requiring this?
So I definitely talked to the two principals who I've spoken to, our community service coordinators, and as far as I know, they're, they're ready to go, so.
All right. That's my only question.
I, I, just as a point of information, I know some kids who, before we took away the requirements, had done community service and had submitted their 10 hours or so prior to us suspending. So those are still going to be held by the old coordinators, correct?
Correct, those were all credited. Anything that was completed in, up till March 2020 when school closed, I believe we went back and made sure everybody was credited for that.
So any other questions on any of these change or amendments?
Just a point of procedure.
Yeah, Mr. Santoro.
Once we, once you approve this and it comes out of subcommittee, I assume it has to go before the full committee for then, for the public to know that we are now, once again, requiring community service, correct?
Yes, yes. So after the, it'll be on the agenda for the meeting next Wednesday?
But not for a vote.
I'm sorry, yeah, so, right, so it'll be there as old business, then I post it on the website to say this is a policy change that the school committee is going to vote on at the next meeting, and then we'll vote on October 12th.
Doug?
Just one last question, and it, it doesn't exclusively relate to this, Mr. Santoro, and we were talking before about the next item that's on the agenda, but can you just walk through the different vehicles through which this information comes out? In other words, there's the policy book, there's the Program of Studies, is there a handbook? Like, how many different places do you look for that there can be discrepancies in language? Where, what are they, and who do they go to?
I think those are the three places that you mentioned. So the Program of Studies, that undergoes a really a regular review every year by a lot of people.
And is that district-wide, is that school by school?
District-wide, it's for the two high schools.
Yep.
It's for the two high schools, and it's used during the course selection process.
Yep.
That information is also on the website, on the high school websites. And then the handbooks, Mr. Santoro had also had mentioned that to me, that the, we have to make sure that the handbooks also.
And those go to students and parents, too?
The handbooks as well, yes.
And, and you look at the handbooks and, and that's really conduct? And the other is curriculum? So why, why would I, as a parent, look at those two, which, you know, and for what purposes am I looking at them?
The Program of Studies really is strictly for course selection and for people understanding the process, you know, towards graduation, and then the rights and responsibilities handbook has other things in addition, but it also has this outline of the graduation requirements.
The third thing is our policy manual.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Which is probably the least referred to, I would say, by parents.
Thank you. One sec. Anyone else?
I just have one quick question. We have, we have the handbooks on some agenda, some subcommittee to be reviewed soon anyway, don't we, the process?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the high school promotion and graduation requirements? Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guttrow, second one by Ms. Hubley, all those in favor?
Aye.
So that'll go on to the next school committee meeting?
Yes.
Second item on the agenda is Quincy Public Schools' cellphone usage policy for students. The proposed establishment of a policy section in Book Nine. We again have a, a draft before us, put together again by Superintendent and Ms. Owens. It's been a concern of, I know, teachers and principals, it's been an ongoing concern, and something I brought up a year or so ago, and I know the mayor is someone who's in favor of getting some type of policy in place, so. Any discussion, any questions about the policy you read? Ms. Hubley?
Thank you. So on here, just a few things I picked out. So on here it says headphones, do we need to write in earbuds, any other specific type of things? Would that be needed?
Sure.
Okay. And also, on the last section, I mean, I believe there should be a section in here that says unless otherwise noted in a student's 504 or IEP for classroom necessity as approved by the teacher?
Is that after the number three?
I would say, yeah, after number three, maybe a number four.
Sure. Anybody have a question on that?
No, I agree with what she's saying, but I don't think it should be approved by the teacher. I think that there should be something a little more official, and it could may, it might be the nurse, because there are diabetics who use their cellphone to gauge how much insulin they have to give themselves. So it might, but it needs to be somebody responsible and not a teacher having to make that decision on her own, or his own in a classroom full of kids.
Good point.
So I'd rather it was a specialist of some sort in there that would make that decision.
It could be the building principal, his or her designee. That may be the language you would want.
That might be better, yeah.
Can we amend that to include this?
And Mr. Burgoli, I have one other question. I'm sorry.
I wasn't finished, sorry. On the second offense part, it says a student's parent or guardian will be called in and the device will be returned to them. Should we need to specify that who will be returned to when we say them? Are we referring to the parent or guardian?
Sure.
And then this, I'm just, just for people that are gonna just not understand the exact wordage, students committing repeated violations of this policy may be subject to additional disciplinary actions consistent within the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
What are those?
Yeah.
We don't say what they are.
So it would rarely fall under probably the, like, an insubordination, because obviously they're continuing to not follow the rules, but we can put together more specific language if you want. I mean, it would be basically student subordination, failure to follow the school rules essentially, but if you want more specifics.
I mean, I'm asking for myself, too, and like, what would that fall under? What would, what would the fourth, they do this over and over and over and over again, the parents come in, they get the phone.
Oh, you mean what would the penalty be?
What would it be? What would happen on the fourth time?
That's really, I mean, it could be anything from, I've seen in other policies, the cellphone is prohibited from use for the remain, for a longer period of time all the way up to including the remainder of the school year. But that's certainly something that the policy could state if that's
Yeah.
what you wanted it to state. There are some policies we've taken a look at where subsequent violations do result in the cellphone being banned for the remainder of the school year. And then there can be something less than that.
And banned in what sense?
I mean, not be able to bring it to school, not be able to bring it to school.
So how do we enforce that? How do we know a kid has that cellphone on his person when he comes to school? I mean, he could have it, and if he doesn't use it during the school day or whatever...
It would be, it would be, as we always, we would depend upon the teacher and administrator, the principal, to make sure that that's enforced.
Again, I guess it just, it seems like a no teeth policy. That's what I'm seeing, is like, kind of like, if they're not gonna, okay, you can't bring it to school, or else we see it, you can't have it, and then they're gonna just bring it to school the next day. Okay, we're gonna see it, give it back to your parent again, and I'm just gonna bring it the next day.
I mean, you could get into the realm of suspending a student for bringing, for continuing violations. That could be part of the policy if, if that's what you wish. We have, there have been some policies we've taken a look at, not necessarily Massachusetts, but in other states where a suspension was imposed for continuing violations. So obviously, that would be a suspension from school.
Well, if that's the case, I think it should be in building and not out of building. Because then they miss academic time, I mean, they can, they are still.
They're still, it's still technically considered a suspension, even if it's in building.
Right.
Because they're not in their normal cycle of classes.
Correct. They're not out of school and doing whatever they want.
So the suspension is a possibility if that's, you know, if that's what you want to see in the policy?
Yeah. With, and with these amendments, are we gonna be able to bring this forward, or do we have to do this all over again?
Yeah, we'd have to talk about it at a subsequent policy meeting. We have another one scheduled for October 19th.
I'd like to see this on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman? Well, I think Kathy's got the floor.
And I think these guys are on the committee, so you guys.
I had a whole bunch of questions.
Okay.
Kathy's still got it.
I'm all set, thank you, that was all I had.
How many questions do you have, Mr. Santoro?
That's right, I'll yield to Mr. Guttrow.
I'll yield to the folks not on the committee. So, so I have a whole bunch of different questions about this. Five years on the school committee, zero calls, zero emails about this. Five years as a parent, going to meet with my, my son's teachers? No teacher's ever brought it up to me as being an issue. Has QEA raised this as an issue to you formally in writing?
Not formally in writing, but in our, the meetings that we've had with teachers over the last couple of years, this has been one of the top.
Do you have a survey?
We do not.
Can we do a survey?
We certainly could.
Can we do a parent survey?
Yes.
Yeah. The, so, you know, I'm trying to figure out what the impetus is, because, you know, during the pandemic, we get a lot of calls about a lot of issues. I didn't get calls about phones, you know, or, or any of that. Maybe we're back in the classroom, it's a different world. Yeah. But, you know, and I know a lot of students actually work with their teacher and use the phones as a tool, you know, a teaching tool as well. And, and, you know, discretion of the teacher, I think, is an important issue. The, the policy talks about often a source of disciplinary interventions, so I would like a list of disciplinary interventions by school on phone-related issues. If we could get that. The, the other presentation that we haven't had is how is this managed today? District-wide, school by school, you know, any emails that you have from principals on the issue that have risen? Yeah, I would love to see, you know, I've sat through five years of school improvement plan meetings with principals, never came up as being an issue. I'm just looking for the groundswell that I haven't heard, and maybe it's out there. You know, maybe folks watching at home tonight will begin to email us and call us, and people will have opinions, you know. So those are the things that I'm interested in, the parent survey, the teacher survey, the, the disciplinary issues around it. You know, I mean, I feel strong, as a parent, and we've talked about this, Mr. Superintendent, you know, last year there was a pretty significant incident that took place at North Quincy High School, scared the daylights out of a lot of the kids who had no idea what it was, the school went in lockdown. That was my lifeline to my son that was there. He was scared. He was texting me, he was communicating with me on the phone. Super important to have that lifeline, you know? I mean, I ultimately went, I was outside the school waiting for it all to happen, but that ability to communicate with my son at an important time mattered to me. So I'm just trying to figure out if we're solving a problem that isn't a gigantic problem here, and that, are we saying that the discretion of the principals, or whatever the policy they have in every school? And again, I don't know what the policy is, because I haven't heard anybody call to complain about it. Is it, is it completely at the discretion of the principals? Do they do it? Are certain principals saying that it's not, it's an issue? And, and it would be just useful, because I have no data from, from anybody that's raised it as an issue to me as just one member of this body.
We can certainly do surveys. The currents, the, the current handling of cellphones at the elementary level, it's not an issue, cellphones are not used in the classroom, same with middle school, they're not permitted in all of the classrooms in the middle school. And now at the high school, the principals have started the year communicating to their students that cellphones would only be permitted at lunch break and study.
So is it, is it a letter that you wrote to the principals of middle schools? And, I mean, how is it all?
The principals.
So how did they know, or did they just come together and they use their own discretion?
Principals, in conjunction with their staff, have definitely determined that cellphone use during class is a distraction.
And so where the, so where do the phones go when you walk into an elementary or middle school?
So the, for high school, they, the students can have the phones on them.
Yeah.
They just have to keep them put away and silenced so that they're not a distraction. Middle schools, they keep their phones in the locker. Elementary schools, it's, it's really hasn't been an issue in the elementary schools. Many students at the elementary level
Don't have.
Don't have them.
Yeah.
If they have them, typically they're in their backpack, but again, they're not going off typically or being used at the elementary level, certainly not being used in the classroom that teachers wouldn't permit.
So you don't, is what you're saying, there's not a problem in the middle schools or the elementary schools?
Correct. This is really the issue.
So you're saying the policy in place, whatever it may be, whoever wrote it, is working in those schools?
That's correct, and the policy is no cellphones in the classrooms at the middle schools and certainly not at the elementary schools.
This, although it doesn't say it, this is really targeting the high schools.
Yeah, well, it would be all schools, but yeah, but the problem that we currently have right now, at least from our principals that are telling us, and our teachers are telling us, is that cellphones in the classroom. Forgot to, students texting and not paying attention in class is a real problem.
Got it. Yeah, any, so any, any written, anything on this, I'd love to see it. You know what I mean? Not more than just hallway conversations or whatever. Because they, they have the opportunity annually to come before us and talk about any issues that, that are concerns at the school, and I, I just haven't heard it, so.
I think the survey, particularly the teacher survey, will be eye-opening. I think what you'll see is a pretty high percentage of our teachers, particularly at the high school level, saying that cellphones in the classrooms are a distraction to learning.
Could we see a draft of the survey before it goes out?
Sure.
On the questions that have begun?
Sure.
Thank you. Mrs. Lebo.
So I, first of all, I want to say that I, unlike Mr. Guttrow, I've heard from tons of teachers, because I worked with the teachers and they know me, and I see them all the time socially, and they said that this is an enormous problem. And it became that way because of the pandemic, when everything was sort of opened up and people were on Zoom, and people were in school and on Zoom because the teacher wasn't there, and nobody really knew what was going on, and it really got out of control, and that every kid in the classroom, and they said even in the corridors, they walked down the corridors like this, not even paying attention to what's going on in the room. So I would like to suggest, I'm fine with both of those surveys, Mr. Burgoli, but I would like to see this parent survey done first, I mean, the student survey done first, to inform the parents what it's like with teachers before we ask the parents what they think. Yeah, because I really think we need to get a handle on what's actually going on in the buildings.
Yeah, I, I, so I just said parent and teacher, but student is definitely like three surveys.
Whatever.
That would be excellent.
I just think we should get the teacher's information first.
Teachers first.
Yes, and before we give anybody else a survey, so we can present that information so that people understand what it's like. And I also think if we do the student survey, the high schools now, both of them, are much more clamped down on the phones than they have been before.
Absolutely, they are.
And I'm hearing that from kids and parents, so I think, I think that we might ask the kids how they feel about it, because is it better in school? I have a question about the Chromebooks, though. Are the Chromebooks always working if a teacher wants them to be working?
They should be.
And do kids carry their Chromebooks back and forth?
Yes, so, so we, so at the high schools, in middle schools, students should have their own Chromebooks. We have Chromebook carts at the elementary schools when they need it at the elementary schools, but if there is any Chromebook that's not working, obviously, we have Irvin Matzos, a full-time person staffed here that will, that is fixing.
Do we have like a substitute Chromebook in the classroom?
Oh, yes, we have plenty.
So like, if, if two kids didn't have a Chromebook or it wasn't working, we have plenty in the classroom?
They can turn it in to be fixed and they can swap out for a loner.
Okay, so all Quincy Public School students have not been issued a Chromebook, because K-33 have not been issued.
That's, that's correct.
So that shouldn't say that in here.
So they, there are Chromebook carts, though, at the elementary?
Right, but they haven't all been issued. I just want, I just want their language to be correct.
So in the, in building, if they needed a Chromebook, they have access to it.
Yeah, and I would not be happy with a, in, first of all, I don't even think there are still in-building suspension rooms, are there?
I'm not sure.
There are?
There are sometimes in-building suspensions, yes.
But I would not be happy with a child being kept out of their classroom for anything. I think there has to be some other way of doing it.
So would you suggest to send them home for this?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest suspension, because I think that's, I don't know what I'd suggest. I worry about, you know, and plus, you know, you know how many suspensions we might get out of this?
Initially.
Our schools are gonna be judged by the amount of people we're suspending.
Initially.
So I, I think we have to think of, and maybe we could hear from the principals, too, and think about some other consequences that could take place that would, would be more appropriate, or, but I worry about the suspension issue.
Mr. Santoro and then Mrs. Cale.
I have a problem with the implementation. We put our teachers in a terrible situation, because what happens is, let me have your cellphone. No. They walk away. Teacher's not gonna grab the phone or the child. So what we do is, is we put our staff and administration in a terrible situation with the policies we come up with, because they can't be enforced. There needs to be another bullet here. If the child refuses to turn over their cellphone, what's the punishment? Because I've been there. I've taken them to the door, cellphone or door. If you choose door, don't, you need to come back with a parent. And I said this before, some kids never come back. The problem is in the implementation. We currently have the policy at Quincy High in the handbook. I know, because I was part of it. It states, "The use of electronic devices is subject to the terms and conditions as set forth in the acceptable use policy." That's the same as North Quincy, by the way. Found in Appendix K of this handbook, "The use of electronic devices such as iPads, iPods, and cellphones is permitted with the approval and supervision of a staff member. The use of such devices, however, is prohibited in the hallway during passing time. Devices used without the approval will be confiscated and returned. Parents will be called to retrieve the items of the chronic violators. Continuous violations will result in disciplinary action. Failure to turn over said items will result in suspension and reentry hearings with the principal." If you do not have the punishment for the person who says no, it's senseless to have the policy. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mrs. Cale.
Well, this is a valuable discussion, because I have heard from parents who are, who are concerned about, you know, the distraction of cellphones, and if we all want to be honest, I think we are all distracted by our cellphones. I mean, I, I just bought a device that I can lock my phone up when I'm working, so I'm not distracted by texts or, you know, emails, or I have like five emails on my phone, different accounts and stuff for different things. So I did a little bit of research and looked at different places that have banned or have a plan around the use of cellphones in the classroom, and there is a lot of data that, that shows that academic achievement is not as high as it could be because of the distractions of phones. The other thing is social impact, you know, mental health, things like that, unwarranted videos of kids, other students, then sharing them on social media, things that happen in school. Some of it, you know, banning them, I think, keeping them in a, when you're in an academic setting, in your bag, so that if there is an emergency, you know, something happening in the school, and the kid wants to get in touch with their parents, it can be in their bag or it's someplace close to them. But I think that if we're really concerned about what our kids are learning in, in the classroom, and if we're really concerned about the distraction and the effects that they're using phones for other things and bullying and things like that, I think we have to look at this and come up with a plan that makes sense. And if we don't have a policy that is, states everything clearly, and, you know, take our time and think about what are the, some of the ramifications for these kids, you know, we have to have it written, so a parent's not gonna say, well, it doesn't say you're gonna suspend my child, you know, what is that gonna be? So I don't think we have to rush, I think we have to continue the discussion, you know, write things down, come up with some ideas, listen to, I mean, having a, a survey is great, you know, because then we can see really what people are thinking, like you said, and the teachers who are in the classroom. I can't imagine, I mean, I know people that have meetings, professional business meetings, and they'll have a basket at the door for people to put their phone in the, in the basket so that they can have a discussion without the distraction of people looking at their phone, and I'm sure it's the same thing in a classroom. I mean, to Frank's, you know, point, it's hard to, we have to make sure we put things in place that we can enforce as best as we can, and there's always gonna be the outlier that's gonna fight back on all of that, and that we're gonna have to figure out, policy-wise, exactly how to deal with that. And, and suspension, you know, might, probably isn't the answer, because like you said, it, again, the ramifications to our system for suspensions, you know, maybe that, that person can never bring their phone in, it has to be locked up in the building when they come and go. You get it back when you leave, you know, something like that. I don't know. But I think we have to have the discussion and just keep on nailing and hammering it away until we get it to a point where we think it's, it's acceptable to the teachers, the people, the principals, and then parents. And I think we'll hear a lot from parents who, if they're concerned about what their kids are learning and concepts and things like that, that they have to be paying attention to, you know, they're gonna probably agree with us. So that's, that's my thought, anyway.
Thank you. Mrs. Hubley?
Yeah, I also wanted to agree that I have also heard from teachers and parents on this as well, and also school committee members from other towns, this isn't just a Quincy thing.
thing, and other, other towns that have passed similar policies about cellphone banning. And one thing, one person was telling me the other day, is that they've actually seen a correlation, once they've had their policy in place, with less vaping in the schools, because there's not as much communication between the students in class to meet in the bathrooms. So they've had less bathrooms being occupied by vaping lately. Bring that up.
Mrs. Lebo.
I was just wondering if we could hear from the principals, too. I mean, to Mr. Santoro's point, what about in the cafeteria? How, how many people are supervising the cafeteria, and how many kids are in there that they could possibly know who's doing what? I mean, there are, are there places where it's okay to use? Do any of the other schools have places where, like at the lunch, you can use your phone?
Currently, they're allowing the use of cellphones at lunch and during studies.
At, at ours, high schools?
Both high schools. But otherwise, it's not permitted in the class unless the teacher permits it for use in a classroom assignment or something like that.
But the kids don't have Chromebooks.
But again, we've been pushing the use of the Chromebooks instead.
Mm-hmm.
But we want to give teachers some flexibility in allowing the phones for use in like a lab or math class for calculator use, or something like that.
And I like, I like the, I mean, I think it's fair to, I also think it's fair to allow the kids to have their phone if at lunchtime, or they have a free time of their own, to be able to check in and see what, you know, with their friends, or whatever it is that they do on on their phone. But again, I think the biggest piece is academic achievement, right?
I do, and and the social impact is huge also. But I also think that most parents are gonna recognize that they can't get their kids' attention when they have their phones out either, so that they may not mind the fact that, but I would like to see how the teacher, because the teachers I heard from were really, really struggling last year with the phones, really struggling.
And when we reviewed the policies, some school districts are no usage, you know, from 7:30 in the morning till 2:30 in the afternoon on the campus, and others do allow lunch and study.
And it will be interesting to see how it's working with our principals, the way they're doing it now.
Definitely the bigger cities, Boston, Worcester, Springfield, have the complete ban. Chicopee, Chicopee has the pouches, the magnetic pouches, so the students don't have, don't even have access to the phones in, in any way. It gets unlocked when you're leaving the building, so.
And I think, I think that might be a little bit drastic, because, I mean, maybe to Mr. Gatto's point, if there is an emergent, I I kind of, sometimes I feel like having, kids having their phone in the school and there is an emergency, it can create more anxiety for parents and families, because the kids just calling their parent, and they don't really know what's happening, where the school might have things under control, and it just creates more panic. But I think what we'll, what we might find is that parents would like their child to have the ability to have the phone there in case there was some kind of an emergency for them.
There was a recent incident at Quincy High School, and I know firsthand that some students, they said to the students, it's an emergency, just leave your bag here. You're not, we're not mucking around with you. That's what the teachers say all the time, just exit the building, you know, going through your bag. And so a lot of kids left their cellphones in their building, so, because they're not supposed to.
Yeah, to that point, Mrs. Lebo, we actually spoke with the police department on that issue, so we're going to make sure that it's communicated school-wide, that when there is a situation like that, where the school is being evacuated, they're going to be told to take their belongings with them. The belongings that they have with them there.
That's a good idea.
And take it with them out. So that will be communicated.
A lot of kids didn't have their phones, so, when they were out there.
It's important. Gatto?
Yeah, and I was just gonna say, so I'll, I'll keep an open mind going forward, I'm interested in the surveys, but the, what we have before us, and I know that we have the luxury of changing it, it says, "May not be used for any purpose on school grounds except," and it just says, "after school or sports activities, only with permission and evening activities." So a lot of the things that you just talked about, that the schools already permit, calf, study, lunch, lab, or whatever, you know, those exemptions don't exist in what's before us. And just that voice from parents, teachers, students would help us carve out where it's safe and reasonable and.
Yeah, the document before you.
Yeah, I understand.
It's just a first draft.
Yeah.
So we intended to be significantly modified one way or the other.
Yeah, and I, and, you know, I mean, I am ultimately concerned, it'd sort of be good to get feedback on, on the the discipline around it. You know, everything that Emily and others have talked about, you know, how do we manage that? How do you do that if the, if the student won't give up the phone? And then is it a suspension-worthy thing? And what what are the other consequences that could be equally significant? But yeah, I mean, you don't want to have to have them to show up at the principal's office every day to drop a phone, you know, depending on, I don't, again, how big of a deal is this? I, I, I've got no data on how big of a deal this is, so when we get the, the list of disciplinary interventions, we'll get a, we'll get a sense as to how big of a deal it is.
I think a good way to avoid a suspension in the case where children do not comply with any of the steps would be to require a parent conference.
Yeah, I think that's.
I mean, that, that's, I think, a long, would deter kids from not following the rule.
That's a good, that's a good answer.
Require a parent conference if you refuse to turn over your phone.
And we can build that into the policy. Mrs. Cale.
Do we even have, like, a record of disciplinary action if we don't really have a set policy, like a lot of students who have, who have been, you know, had disciplinary actions due to phone activity?
It's in Aspen.
Yeah, we should be able to.
Yeah, like, we've had a lot of that, that's what I'm saying, like, it's been a, it's been a big enough issue that we have a, like, a record of it.
It probably, what's in Aspen doesn't capture like 100%, but significant issues that have involved cellphones would definitely be noted in the discipline data.
What would be an example of a child, a student being written up for disciplinary action now, without this policy kind of in place?
A lot of part of cellphone discipline, and it goes into, it overlaps, as it could go into bullying, so for instance, a student takes a picture of another student and then uploads it with negative or derogatory commentary about that student.
Mm-hmm.
So it's generated through the cellphone in school.
In school.
Which is a total disruption, and it also is another example of, so how social media negatively impacts the school. But that would be just one example of how cellphones are used to cause a disruption within the school.
And those, those, that would be an example of what we've come up against?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I also just would like to say that I've had communications with teachers and students regarding cellphone use in schools. And one of the things that has, that has not been brought up is the fact that, and I confirmed it with students, that there's a lot of cheating going on with cellphone use in the classrooms, where students are taking pictures of tests and then forwarding them to the students who have followed them into that particular class. And I asked students if that does happen, and they affirmed that it does. I'm not saying it's, it's rampant, but it, but it is an issue. And I talked to some teachers who said that some of the students are taking pictures of teachers in the classroom. And I think that's totally inappropriate. And teachers have a hot enough job, as it is, without being filmed by a student, and then, God knows what they're gonna do with that, with that film or that picture. I know that when I coached, I used to have to tell the girls, when they walked through the door, if they're on the cellphone, to put their cellphones away, because it's almost like they're attached to their ears. They just can't get, they, it's such a habit for them. It's some, it becomes such a part of them that it, it just, you just have to remind them all the time, you can't use your cellphones in practice, so. So those are just a couple of other examples, and I, I'm concerned about the, the cheating and the picture-taking of teachers, so, in particular. Anybody else on the committee I'd like to have something or add before we adjourn?
Where are we leaving this, Mr. Brody?
Well, I think we're gonna get a couple of surveys out, correct?
Correct.
And some of the suggestions that were made to amend some of the language in here and add, I think that's gonna be put in by Superintendent and Mrs. Owens, and then we'll reconvene this subcommittee and take a look at that information.
Could we have the principals come to one of those meetings, sir? Just to.
I don't see why not.
We certainly, yeah, absolutely.
And I really, I feel strongly about getting the information from the teachers before we, before we do move out to the bigger community.
I agree with you, Emily.
So that'll be the first survey we get out, and we'll send you the survey before we send it.
Thank you. All right, I'm good.
And and this is exclusively high school, right? When we communicate it, or are we surveyings broadly?
I think we should survey broadly. Obviously, the survey will indicate whether, you know, the responses, so the teachers at the high school, the teachers at the middle school, the teachers at the elementary, it'll indicate the level in which the responses are coming in.
Okay, great.
Anybody else?
No.
Thank you, everybody.
Needing adjournment.